This time we bring the Stigler Board of Education regular meeting. Monday, they bring the 2020 meeting to order. President are David, Kenny, Jennifer, and Suzie. This time he recognizes Stigler High School website development class. Patrick Phillips.
Mr. Phillips, I'll let you guys come up here and take over the computer.
Okay.
Invited our, if you guys want to get on this one, we're going to talk a little bit. Invited our, Mr. Phillips's class from the high school who manages our website. Earlier this year, we approved switching our website vendors. So they've been in the process the last couple of months of updating that with an anticipated launch pretty soon. Going to read the certificate that we presented, that we will present to all of you. State Public Schools Board of Education hereby recognizes Donovan Jeong for representing Stigler Public Schools as a member of the website design team and helping transition us to our new website for the 2019-2020 school year. Noah Thompson, Gabby Chapman, Keegan Parks, Kylie Windlet, on his own computer right now, Layla Bunton, Emma Goodman, Emma Upton, and instructor Patrick Phillips. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
This year, we have been asked to make a new website, which is hosted by Gabbert's Communications. We are updating it to be a drag and drop platform, which will make it easier for others to add content to our website. We have transferred all of our old content onto the new website, and we are only waiting for assistance in changing the domain name and root record. We hope to have our website running in two weeks. So now, we are going to show you what our future home website will look like.
Like you said, it's work in progress. They've been working on it for a couple of months. They've got two more weeks. We appreciate it being here. No, and they have been in that class and they're doing it this year, but they've done it for the last several years, our website. We just wanted to upgrade. Is it platform? Is that the correct terminology? Upgrade the platform. Gabbert's based out of Durant, website development place, and worked with a lot of schools across Oklahoma, so we're excited about the change.
It's one of those cases where we've all saved it on our computer, and we never have to type it in. We did that the first day.
In most cases, maybe you probably just go to Gabbert and just showcase some of the better part.
We're almost ready. You know, we've taken all the content we had, and it's a drag and drop platform, like she said. So you, in a lot of cases, you can take a document you want to upload. But in a lot of cases, it's a drop and load, drag and drop. So if you want to upload a menu or something else, whoever has access to that page can simply drag the file in and go over it on the site and you don't have to do any coding or anything else. Our site, the way we've designed it, has a slideshow. It has a menu at the top. It has a slideshow where we'll show current things are happening, pictures from recent events, sporting events, anything recent. It has some, it has a calendar. And the calendar, when the secretary's uploaded their information to their calendar, it automatically gets uploaded to ours. So any kind of site, any kind of event that's happening, middle school, elementary school, high school, will show up on the calendar. Has a list of events. It'll show what you think of all the events as well. Calendar is active, meaning if you drag the mouse over it, it pops all the events on that date, listing all the things that happened. We'll have the information about all the activities, schedules, rosters, pictures, et cetera. So Board of Agenda meetings, whatever the case may be, all on our site.
Lot more user-friendly, lot more interaction with it. And I think it's, anytime people are looking to move to a community, one of the first things they might do is do a web search and do a school site search. And we think upgrading this website will also upgrade our school system and people's ability to hear the story of all the good things that are going on. So Emma, Kylie, we appreciate you guys coming out here today. If you guys want another run at it sometime, you holler us next month, and we might bring you back. And I appreciate you guys remembering that.
This time we move on to the approval of minutes from January 13, 2020 meeting.
Any changes?
Ashley May, by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve minutes for the January 13, 2020 meeting. King?
Yes.
Jennifer, please. David? This time we move on to approve eleven conferences.
Oh, I don't think anything special. I forgot my notes. Let's see if there's anything on there we want to talk about. We did a big order of paper. It's probably a big one. We'll talk about the top one, 326 COSA, in my superintendent's report, where we have eight staff members on a, we've got a four-day package with them on instructional learning framework. We've gone once to Oklahoma City, and we still have three more coming on that. Several different items. There's a couple on there, 337 for our O-Circle grant, still continue to spend that money. What number? Oh, yes. We've covered that money. Those are the last two payments we have that used to go to Kyvoy that now go to CDI. So that's exactly what that is on number 348. Yeah, there's, there's one more after that. Yes. The third page is just the dashboard board.
Ashley May, by David, second by Kenny, to approve the conferences. As listed, no changes. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer, please. And Suzie. Other financial reports.
And I'll just reference the screen, minimal difference on there. The biggest difference, you see, hey, man, it looked like we didn't spend a lot of money in 20, at this year, last time we had this is when we bought our suburban. So that's the biggest difference. Sixty-plus thousand is what we spent on the suburban when we were student. And then still anticipating, yes, we're about 2.5, anticipate spending about 500 more of that, and then 1.9, maybe halfway through 1.9 for the year. So still on track, still feel pretty good about where we are financially.
This time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point of regular meeting. Comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. Other comments in accordance with policy VED-R. Have three presenters tonight. Each speaker will be limited to a five-minute timeframe, 15 minutes total, which may or may not include both questions and/or answers from the board. Speakers will be limited to comments only during this section unless they have listed in their request to ask questions pertaining to that subject. I will allow this if they did within stipulation it stays on that subject and within the allotted timeframe. The board president has a right to deny speakers or any issues previously addressed to the board and/or to be placed on the agenda for future meeting. Objective criticism of school operations and programs as concerned, they will be allowed but must be listed on the request by the speaker. Attacks on the board as a group and individual members will not be tolerated. Any speaker or persons in attendance that disrupts the meeting by not abiding by these guidelines will be asked to stop, and if they refuse, will be asked to leave. You're up.
I'm up.
You are up.
Okay. Well, I had to write this down so I'd remember. My name is Russell Suggs. My address is 10276 North Perry Luke Road. My question is about school board training. On October 14th, I believe, the motion was made and seconded by David and Kenny, I believe, to have a board training with Dr. Anne Kane. The meeting was set and put on the agenda for the board training for November 12th, and on November 11th, the agenda was pulled and the meeting called off. And after that school board meeting, I asked you that night if you was going to still have the training, and you said you would, reschedule the training on a later date whenever one could attend. And I just kept wondering why, or what's the holdup, or are you still going to do it, or what?
We can still do it, just whenever we decide to do it as a board.
Okay, so it's not any plans to do it?
It's never really been brought up again, so.
Okay. All right, well, that was my question. I was just curious since the way it might happen.
It's never been brought up again, so I don't know. We may or may not.
Okay, I mean, how's the board feel really about the training?
Well, we get training when we go to Oklahoma City in August. We have, you know, classes that we go to. And then Kymis, she puts on, we'll be putting one on in March, March or April, can't remember. But that's a whole board training also, and that's with other schools around. So that's one we usually attend, and it's probably the one that we'll do.
Okay. Well, I was just curious as to what happened.
Yeah, and we have, we have other meetings that we can attend throughout. We have a regional meeting that comes up at the end of this month that we can attend. So we have several opportunities to get our continued education points.
Okay. Do y'all think it's a good thing or a bad thing as far as meeting meetings or training?
Oh, absolutely. We have to. It is required by law.
Right.
Yeah. It's required.
That was my question.
Okay. Thank you. Joey? Right? Is Joey out there?
He's still laying.
Okay. And then Mr. Board, Richard. You're welcome.
Members of the board, my name is Richard Ford, 10550 North Perry Luke Road. As a member and a citizen of the community, I would like to respectfully ask some questions tonight. Questions that I feel know only you as board members know the answers to. Before asking these questions, I would like to personally thank each and every one of you for your community service. I can appreciate the devotion and sacrifices that comes with this position. Knowing most of you personally, I have supreme confidence that you're operating in the best interest of the community, and you will settle for nothing less than I'm actually responsible for that for administration. First question.
I need to stop you.
Yes.
You did not state in your, in your letter that you wanted to ask questions. You have to state that.
I don't know.
No, that's right here. Just this subject association superintendent, district, and say questions and answers. So, sorry. You can get on the next one meeting if you want to.
The first question I have asked about the association.
But you have to state, I need to ask questions.
So I need a list of all the questions that I'm going to ask.
Just, just state, ask questions.
Got it?
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, that's all right. It is what it is.
Thank you.
Like you.
This time we move on to the presentation. Terry Patten, CPA, Mr. United.
Okay. Thanks very much. I'm Terry Patten. I'm here to give you your audit report, your 1819 audit report. I appreciate everyone for letting us time. I think y'all got a copy there. If I could walk through you, walk with you through this thing, starting on page one. Page one is my independent audit report. If y'all mind if I space it, I can turn the page. Page one is my independent audit report. That's where I test of reasons for the financial statements. It's kind of a long-winded, two-page letter that says that management's responsible for the financial statements and the internal controls, and the audit is responsible for audit and report, which generally accept audit and standard and government audit and standard. Says down at the bottom of the page there that there's an adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. That really doesn't mean anything other than the fact that Stigler School District, like Oklahoma, like 99% of the schools in Oklahoma are not on generally accepted accounting principles. They are on a regulatory basis accounting that's prescribed by the State Department of Education, and it has, it's a little bit different than generally accepted accounting principles. On the second page of this particular opinion, it talks about the basis for qualified opinion under regulatory basis accounting. We came in a couple of months ago, and Steph and I, we found everything to be in real good shape. This opinion is qualified to do with the general fixed asset account group. Here again, we do about 60 school districts in the state, and I don't have one that has the records and the information to have the general fixed asset account group showing up on the financial statements. So this is a pretty common qualification, but it is a qualification. Other than that, we found everything to be in good shape here. It talks about some other matters and other information there. The main opinion has to do with the financial statements that we're looking at here in the very front. We have some other information in there that has to do with the activity fund and the expenditure of federal awards. And this letter talks about those particular items being audited with the same audit procedures as what we used on the basic financial statements. Down at the very bottom of page two, it talks about other reporting required by government auditing standards. We have two other reports in here besides this one I'm, besides this one I'm on right now. One of them has to do with internal controls here at the school, the other has to do with major federal programs at the school, and we'll get to those here in just a minute. I'm going to try to, I don't want to bore a whole bunch of people, so I'm going to move kind of fast. If y'all want me to slow down, just tell me. On page one there, or page three, that's your, your balance sheet. It's called combined state of assets, liabilities, and fund balances. But it has each of your fund types there, and it has the, it's basically a snapshot at June 30th, 2019, of any money that you had in the bank, any liabilities that was against it, and then your fund balance down at the bottom there. And it's got each of your fund types, your special revenue, your building, fund debt, service, sinking, fund, trust, and agency, your activity funds. And then you've got a general long-term debt account group there. It shows how much debt you had outstanding at June 30th, 2019. The page number four is a revenue expenditure and change in fund balance sheet, and it'll show you those same fund types at the top. This one here gives you the revenues collected by a source such as local, intermediate, state, and federal. And your expenditures are shown there by O-CAS function code. And you can look at this and see if you spent more or less than you took in during the year. Say, for instance, on the general fund there, it looks like y'all, you had an excess of revenues over expenditures of about $103,000, $104,000 last year. And you can see down at the bottom there that that increased your fund balance last year, a beginning fund balance of $1,856, you had an ending fund balance of $1,960. So you did pretty good last year, considering that last year was a tough year for school districts, just like the last several have been. On page five is a budget to actual. It's got the general fund, the special revenue fund there, and on the left-hand part of that page, you've got your general fund. It shows the original budget. That's the budget that, where we set up the revenues and the appropriations at the time we did the estimate of needs earlier in the year. The final budget is if you had to have any supplemental appropriations during the year, such as money that we didn't know about when we did the original budget that came in maybe and had to be placed in the budget, that would be in the final budget column. You can see there that y'all's final and original budget column has the same numbers in it. That just simply means you didn't have to have any supplemental appropriations. And then you've got your actual column there that you can look at and see what actually happened. And it just kind of shows you a picture of how we did budget to actual wise. After that, you've got notes to the financial statements, and these things can really put you to sleep, but I'm going to go through them real fast. On page six, it talks about your recording entity and your measurement focus, basically the regulatory basis of accounting. It defines the different funds on the top of page seven that you all use, and how, what each fund has to be used for, mainly for readers of the financial statements that may not be. Y'all are pretty much know what your funds are for there. And it defines your different, it defines your account group and your basis of presentation on page eight. Page nine gets into more definitions of the captions of the financial statements that we just looked at, the balance sheet and the statement of revenues, expenditure, and fund balance. There's a definition for every one of those lines over there. It gets into definitions of your revenues on page 10, for instance, if somebody didn't know what intermediate revenues are, they could turn over here and it gives you a description. And then you're down at the bottom of page 10, and on 11, you've got those O-CAS function codes defined for you. Number two on page 11, it talks about the deposit category and credit risk. First of all, it lists the nine things that's permissible for Oklahoma school districts to invest in. Then we have some, there's some information there about custodial credit risk and interest rate risk. What we do during the audit there is we pick four or five times that you all during the year have the most money on hand. A lot of times that's after the December ad lorm tax payments come in, maybe the March payment. But we make sure that the treasurer has seen that the bank has pledged enough collateral over the $250,000 that in case of bank failure, y'all would still be all right. And each time we ran that test, we found that to be just fine. Page 13 talks about your general long-term debt, which all y'all had there. I'm sorry, not all y'all had, but the first thing that shows up there on page 13 is the judgment that you had outstanding. There's one last payment that judgment had to do with a vendor situation about three years ago, and we like one more payment on that, $6,666. That'll be, that was levied this year, and it'll already be paid off this year. On page 14, it shows your lease commitments, which are also considered to be long-term debt. And that would be a special ed bus and a lease purchase for LED lighting. And it shows you a payout schedule there for the last three years, and what it's going to take to pay those off. And then your judgment, your lease payable there is combined together in the long-term debt transactions there in the middle of the page. Just shows what was outstanding July 1st, 18, any additions, any retirements, and then the end of the year balance. Then it goes into the retirement, teacher retirement system. Every bit of this information here comes right out of the state teachers' retirement system annual report, and they're actually a report. The only district-specific information there is right at the very end of number five, right before you get to number six, it talks about annual pension cost. It gives Stigler's contributions to the retirement plan the last three years. Talks about risk management there in number seven. That just basically shows that we checked to see that y'all are insured in case of an act of God or something of that, and you have protected all your assets in a prudent manner. Page 16 at number eight, that shows the surety bonds. The state of Oklahoma requires that several positions here at the school have to be bonded for certain amounts of money, and we have to check that and put that in our audit report, and that's why that shows up there on number eight. After that, you've got combining financial statements, and these, I'm going to go over these even faster because what we've got here, like on page 17, this is another balance sheet, but rather than having special revenue up there on the first schedule we looked at, special revenue is your building and child nutrition combined. Well, it breaks them out back here on page 17, so it's the same total as what's up front here, but you can look at this and see how the building fund did, or the child nutrition fund, or what shape they're in individually on page 17. And 18 shows you the revenue expenditure and change in fund balance for each one of those funds separately. Looks like they did pretty well last year as well. Page 19 is a fiduciary fund, that's your activity fund. You also have a gift fund here at Stigler, and it shows the assets there and what the fund balance was. And then on this next page, on page 20, there's gifts and endowment fund, the activity, the little bit of revenue that went in there, and the expenditure that was paid out, and how your change in fund balance. You went from the beginning of the year of $18,359 to the end of the year of $16,838. Then you've got supplemental information. Keep thinking of words to call this stuff. What you got there in, on page 21, here again, it's another budget to actual. It shows the building fund on 21 and the child nutrition fund on 22, so it breaks those out for you rather than combining them up front. You can just see how you did budget to actual wise with the building fund on page 21 and your child nutrition funds on page 22. Then if I could call your attention to page 23, that's the schedule of federal rewards expended. You've got every one of the federal programs that Stigler School District participated in on the left-hand side of the page, and it'll show you all the money that you received on each one of those federal programs, all the money that you expended on them for the year. And all the way over on page 24, you can see that y'all expended $1,741,000 worth of federal grant money last year. Well, any, any, any entity, whether it's a school district or what, that receives over $750,000 of federal money has to get what's referred to as a single audit. And all that means is that rather than all these different agencies sending an auditor in to audit y'all on each of the grants that they gave you, they put it in for one auditor to come in and do those, audit those programs. And what we're required to do there is pick some out of your million and seven, we pick major federal programs. And those major federal programs, the federal government's got a compliance manual, it's about a foot thick, and it's got every one of these programs in it. And so we pick our major federal programs, go to the compliance manual, and they've got recommended audit procedures for each one of those programs, because they want to know that you have complied with all the requirements for each one of those grants. And as you can see down the side there, on the left-hand side, that some of those programs have asterisks behind. For instance, the Title I, the IDAB special ed money, and the child nutrition cluster, those were the major programs we picked this year. Normally, the major programs are picked, oh, it's based on several things, but mainly it's the amount of money you get in those programs. Then if it's a new program or a higher-risk program or something of that nature, we might pick that as well. We try to rotate those from year to year so that we don't get the same programs every year. But we'll have a letter here in just a minute, or a report that I'll go over with you that tells you the results of those compliance tests on those major federal programs. That's why I point that out. If you look on page 26, page 26 is a summary of your activity fund. And also page 27, that'll show every one of your activity sub-accounts down the left-hand side of the page. And y'all probably look at this every month, except this is a year's worth of activity here instead of a month's worth. So you can see what the balance was at the beginning of the year, how much went through there, and what you ended up with at June 30th, 19. It always amazes me how much money that goes through that activity fund in every one of these schools. But we audit that information quite thoroughly as well. And you've got the two other reports that I was referring to earlier. The first one's on internal control. We don't actually give an opinion on internal control, but we come in, when we come in to do the audit, we look at the internal controls here. And when I say internal controls, basically I'm talking about the approval processes, making sure that everything goes through the right channels, the right procedures, also making sure that one person doesn't have too many duties that they shouldn't have, that they need to have a segregation of duties here where one person couldn't accomplish something that you wouldn't want to get done. And when we do that, we look at the different internal controls in the different areas such as purchasing, payroll, federal programs, receipts, that type of thing. And we try to decide if your internal controls are stronger in one area than in another. Say, for instance, you had stronger internal controls, it was very obvious in the payroll particular function, then we might put less audit tests in the payroll area and put our, and concentrate more audit tests in the other area that we felt like the internal controls were weaker. Reason I tell you all that is because we're not actually giving an opinion on internal control, but if we find anything that, when we're doing that, that we just believe that there's a deficiency in the internal control or a material weakness, which are defined in this letter, we bring it to your attention in this letter on page 28 and page 29. And it'll tell you there that we did not find any deficiencies in your internal controls here, nor any material weaknesses. Now, if you look on page 29, the first paragraph and the last sentence, it will say that we did note certain immaterial instances of non-compliance that we reported to you on page 34. These are items that didn't affect the audit report, but we felt like need to be addressed, but they are no mean significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So y'all did well there. On page 30, you've got your, another letter that, this is the letter that speaks only to the major federal programs. It only is talking about those with the asterisks that I showed you or pointed out earlier, the Title I, the special ed, the child nutrition cluster. And this will basically just tell you that we ran those compliance tests on all those major federal programs, and we did not find anything to lead us to believe that Stigler hadn't operated in every way. We found nothing to lead us to believe that there was any problem with compliance in those major federal programs. Page 32 is simply a summary of the things I've already told you. Number one there says that we expressed an adverse opinion on generally accepted accounting principles because you're not on that. principles because you're not on that. Qualified opinion on the regulatory basis of counting. Number two says there's no audit findings reported of deficiencies in internal control. Number three says no instances of non-compliance material in the financial statements. Four is there are no audit findings of deficiencies of internal control over those major federal programs we were talking about. Number five says that the report on compliance for the major federal programs was unmodified, which basically means it was a clean report. And then if you'll look at number seven there, number seven points out again those major federal programs, it lists them out there, Title I cluster, the national child nutrition cluster and the special needs cluster. Those are the major federal programs that we used. After that, page 34, if you'll look at that, page 34 is a separate schedule that we put in there, we call it schedule of comments. But here again, if you'll, I think it's important to point out that first paragraph, it says these conditions don't represent material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal control. They're just areas that we feel like you could do a little better in, we felt like we should bring them to your attention and probably they should be addressed. That's the only thing we have here and we just, we have two of those. And the first one has to do with the policy on timekeeping, a timekeeping policy for your hourly people. Basically, the federal government wants all the hourly people to have consistent time sheets that are, that can be reconciled to the time that they have and those particular, mainly it's because they want to make sure that those particular people get any overtime if they're doing. That's really about the only reason that's there. It has to do with the fact, and you know, you may have some people, some hourly people that have two different jobs. I mean, they might drive a bus and they might do something else and those might pay two different rates. When you have those type situations, you don't just, and you go into an overtime situation, you don't just go into overtime on the rate that they happen to be doing at that particular time, you have to average those out or what they call blending to get the overtime rate. And those are some areas that we think you might could do a little better on as far as maybe amending your time sheet to be a little bit more conducive to this type of stuff. Number two has to do with the, had to do with the surety bonds over there that I was talking about a while ago. We did not have information that showed that y'all's minutes clerk, sorry, but your minutes clerk has to be, has to have a surety bond for $1,000, has to be bonded for $1,000. That's one thing, all my years, I've never figured out why the minutes clerk had to be bonded because I don't know that they'll ever steal any money. But that happens to be one of the state, the state's requirements. And I think y'all's surety bond information, it may just be a matter of getting it straightened up where that particular position is listed specifically. I think there may be some verbiage there that indicates that the minutes clerk was supposed to be bonded, but we'd just like to make sure that it is by having that specific position mentioned. And that's the only two things that, you know, we looked at every area here at the school and those are the only two things we had that we just wanted to bring up and maybe feel like there are opportunities that you could do a little better on. We didn't have any, any problems at all as far as any situations that needed to be reported. And I went through that thing real fast, I know, probably not fast enough for these people, but I'll answer any questions you might have, or if there's something I went over too fast you'd like me to elaborate on a little bit more, I'd be happy to do that. Anybody have any questions?
So it's already been corrected?
Right, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out. On the timekeeping situation, even while we were here, this was a situation that occurred during the 18, 19 fiscal year, but we had already been shown the information where that had been corrected by the school in the 19, 20 fiscal year. I should have pointed that out, that's one of the most important things on there, but...
And we have two clerks, a backup, she is in this session to be here, so we, and she is covered also too. She has a $1,000 bond also, is that how it works?
So she'll need one if you have a deputy minutes clerk.
She is, okay, yeah.
It's just a standing minutes clerk that didn't have a minutes.
Okay.
Also, a, because I'm bonded for more of the, the number of incidents.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank y'all very much, I appreciate you. Do you want me to take that? Do you want me to wait and take that with me or you want to just get it here? Do what? Well, y'all are saying that, I'd like to also tell you that we certainly appreciate the way we've treated when we come down my staff and I to audit. The schools, we do 60 school districts and probably 11 tech centers. And the schools that have the best audits are the ones with the staffs that are, that you have, and you've gathered quite a competent staff here at Stigler Schools, I'll just tell you that. And we appreciate the, their assistance that we had in getting all the information to us and that type of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll take Travis back. Okay, this time we move on to information items, student attendance reports.
I'll kind of go like Mr. Patton, you stop me if I need to slow down. First off is our legislative update, just a little overview. Want to point out our two area legislators, Representative Randleman and Senator Boggs, those are two points of contact that I encourage you guys, if you're interested in public education, they know what we want as school people. They don't know what community people have in mind. So when school people come to them, they have to, they kind of rule us out pretty quick like. But when community people come to our legislators, they're more apt to listen. So I would encourage you, if you're interested in public education, to be, to be involved with both of those men. Initially, what we know going into this legislative update, we do have from the governor, a slight increase in education funding proposed, but when you look at it across the table, it's not going to do anything to keep us flat other than it's going to help us pay for those pay raises that were enacted last year. So that 11.7 will be gone. But yes, it is an increase in funding. There's really no major initiatives out there. A lot, a lot of it is focused on virtual schools and school calendars. You'll hear the term four-day week. It's wanting those schools to go a certain number of days, so that's a lot of the talk right now. There is $100 million in savings proposed that rainy day, there's $163 million out there that they're going to still negotiate. The biggest thing concerning to me that I want to make you aware of is the Oklahoma Equal Opportunity Scholarship Tax Credit. Don't let the name fool you. It's a proposed increase. Currently, there's $5 million allowed for that. It's proposed to move it to 30. What that allows is people to give to private schools and get that money back. That money that they get back would go into the general fund, which helps fund schools. So if they do increase that, that's $25 million lost to public ed. There is some things we can do with public ed. It used to be explicit just for private schools. They've opened up some windows where that donation, if you, if you have a one-year agreement, you'll get 50% of your money back. If you have a two-year agreement, you get 75% of your money back. So if we can find a way to partner with that here with public schools, we would love to, to partner with you guys to do that. I will do my best to find out more ways that we can expand on that opportunity that they've given public schools. The revenue projections won't be finalized until February 18th, but just some quick fast facts, fact, fast facts on the bottom of what's out there. 321 new education bills and 80-plus shell bills. Those shell bills are bills that are written that aren't clearly defined and have, that could have impact on us. And then since our legislator, they're on two-year terms, there's 327 carryover bills that have potential. So I will continue to update us, but that's what we know so far. Facilities update, we've been talking about roofs. Foundation has become our number one priority right now in order to fix, we've got to fix our foundation before we do anything roof-wise. We have a bid, I'm going to ask you guys here in a little bit as one of our action items. Pico and our maintenance crew said it is something urgent that we need to get to the top of the list. They, and I'll talk more about that when we bring that item out. But we've also found some more foundation issues at the high school that will need to be addressed, but the priority for sure is the gym. And we're still meeting with contractors to talk about roofs. First grade hot water, all of those classrooms need hot water. We've got everything ordered, the plumbers coming in and by the end of next week, they will have that. Our crew has recently cleaned out our two boilers and they have passed inspection. They've also installed, if you've been in the gym in the last week, a new monitor in that gym lobby that they can live stream the game, but they've also got different announcements that's going to be, junior high, middle school games are going on. But with varsity, the plan is to live stream those games. So if you go spend some money in our concession stand, which we encourage you all to do, you won't miss any of the game. We've got some door issues as well. You see some of the doors on the bottom, they're just, our crew has done a great job welding some things back, but it's, it's to the point where we've got three to five of them that we're going to have to replace pretty quick. And just do want to highlight those three guys down at the bottom, Pico Pemberton, Dennis Wright and Calvin Lynn. Amazing, we're able to get a bunch of stuff done with those guys doing it and not have to hire people from the outside. So proud of, proud of them and proud to have them on staff. Student achievement update, a lot of stuff going on there. Professional development focus, some things that we've been involved in. I talked about the ILF, the Instructional Leadership Framework that Coast has put on in Oklahoma City. We took eight people, two from, from each site as well as myself and Dr. Kettles. The first session concentrated on coming back and bringing a 20-day action plan. Each of those site teams developed what they wanted to do and all three of them, they were going to build a guiding coalition, a leadership team at their own site to start making some decisions and then creating that site vision. We go back to our second session at the end of this month. Principals, myself, Dr. Kettles have also completed a webinar on grading reform and we just had some internal discussions on grading. Then just this past week, we took a tour to the Parker Intermediate Center in McAllister. They have a fifth and sixth grade center. Originally went over there to look at one of their middle schools. For the last 10, 12 years, it's the only school that I know of in Oklahoma that has hit the top of whatever grade card the school has put out. They've always had an A on whatever grade scale the State Department has utilized. We talked to their superintendent and he actually recommended they moved a couple principals around to different school sites and he said, man, we've got a really good one at the fifth and sixth grade center. So we just stopped in there when we were over there and long story short, set up a tour for all of us to come back. Seven people went back and we spent over a half day over there looking at what they do systems-wise, program-wise, and some structures and have already started implementing some of those things. I'll talk at the very bottom. We talked about last month, the State Department of Education was, was going to come, Lisa Rohr in their accountability office. That was this past Wednesday when several people across the state had a snow day, so she had to cancel and we're looking for her to come back soon. We do not have that date set. Child nutrition, I'll pass out some stuff before you guys leave. Behind me, I've got a couple of different packets. We're looking at, we're guys, we're looking at every area. We've done a bunch of stuff in facilities and academics. Child nutrition is an area that we've brought some, some outside vendors that come in just like they do with curriculum to help us improve and move forward. So I want to give you that stuff. It's something we'll be looking at in the next two months in terms of how they might be able to come help us, whether it's inventory or ordering or cooking or meal planning. The last couple of things, pre-kindergarten, we have started advertising those vacancies. Want to make sure everybody knows, we are in the four-year-old program next year. We're promoting that enrollment March 5th right here at the board office from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We will have pre-K and kindergarten enrollment on March 5th. And then just to highlight, compliment the staff at the middle school, they have started an eighth period and the fifth graders do a Friday period where they're going back and doing some on-time response to intervention, looking at what kids need academically every week, every two weeks, and shuffling those kids around and targeting specifically what they need. So don't have a lot of data backing that, but just proud of them for doing something new in order to meet the, the needs of our kids. And then the last thing, of course, next month's board meeting is on March 9th, but some schedule updates. We had the game, the Hevenner basketball game last Friday that was postponed. It's going to be this Thursday at Hevenner. The conflict was we had our last junior high game scheduled. Unfortunately, we're going to have to cancel those last junior high games. A lot of our coaches coached both, so even if we had continued with the varsity games, we wouldn't have enough adequate coaching staff to continue. So the decision was made this morning to cancel those. It was announced at the end of the day Friday, our districts will be at Hilldale Friday, the 21st, regionals. Everybody will get at least a shot at regionals and that will be at Manford on Thursday, the 27th. We'll know that time depending on what happens at Hilldale. Monday, the 17th is President's Day. Invite everybody out to the Haskell County Fair on February 24th. And then our baseball scrimmage is still on for February 29th. And want to spotlight BKG if you guys haven't been by there. It's pretty mighty, but they've been doing some work over there, some rock work and putting up some, some pipe and some netting to really touch that baseball field up and just make it a little bit better for those kids. Yes, it's been a great job, so. Concluding, it's about to go.
Okay. Action topics. A, consideration approval of the fiscal year 19 audit.
Thinking for proof, fiscal year 19 audit.
Motioned by Kenny, signed by David to accept the audit for fiscal year 19. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer. Action topic B, consideration of continuing our service agreement with ADPC for the 2021 school year.
ADPCs are financial software that allows these ladies to do what they do. Like Mr. Patton said, we did a great job over here, but that's the software that we need there.
Any changes in cost or anything in that?
No.
I think it's a, I think it's a, yes.
I make a motion we accept the ADPC for 2021 school year.
Motioned by David, signed by Jennifer to accept the service contract agreement with ADPC, our financial software, software for our 2021 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes. Action topic C, consideration to accept bid for the Stigler High School Gym Foundation repair.
Have two bids in there, solicited several, really it was, it was a struggle to even get the second bid. Robert Zachary in town helped consult with us and he got us a couple more people to come. It's going to be myself and Pico's recommendation after meeting with both of those companies. From what I understand, the best way to know full of any foundation repairs to be with somebody who's going to be around for a long time. And Ramjack is well-known, that's going to be around for a long time. Their bid actually came underneath the other bid that we did get. The only other cost that we will incur with the Ramjack bid is we've got to have a plumber come out, do a pre-inspection, somewhere plus or minus $1,000 for that. We have to go back, once they're done, they'll get everything leveled off, but we need to put those VCT tiles back in, so that should be a pretty minimal cost. And then if for some reason he bid out the foam that they're going to go back, once they get everything jacked back up, they're going to, they're going to pump that foam in there. If for some reason they go over 100 gallons, we'll, we will pay the extra on that. Don't anticipate it, but he's only bidding for the first 20 gallons.
But it could be some, you know, like...
Yes, it will, it would just be for the cost of the foam. And I think it come in 20-gallon increments, I think is what he said. He said he didn't anticipate, but every so often, you know, if there's a big sink or something, then they're going to fill it up and we're going to want it to be done.
And when you look at the...
Spring break, they said if we can call them this week and say, hey, our board approved and we're good to go, they felt very confident they could come in and out spring break and no interruption to anything.
Other than, no, what, kind of, um...
Where did we, um, remember, 12 yards or something like that?
Why is it...
Did they say someone responded at this time? I mean, so the Ramjack one was 37,000 and the other one was 40,000.
The other one didn't say how much foam there would be?
And then the other one said too, it only bid it out for like the first 12 feet down, anything, other piers, everything after that was the initial cost. Dennis was around during that time and he's pretty confident that they went well past 12 feet on the last pier.
Is this one, say steel piers, or is this a football? I, it was the, 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 the.
Other than the fact that these guys have came recommending, been trusting his name that's going to be here, I don't know if the other one's going to be through 5. going to be here, I don't know if the other one's going to be here five, ten, fifteen years from now.
Does this say, we don't need to take care of floor peering after?
Yes, they're going to come back and level everything out. Just those small little VCT tiles that you put right back on the top would be our responsibility to finish the, the top of the, of the floors.
Stuart, Stuart, you left.
And then the other one, Ramjack, I think, more peers that they were going to put in as opposed to the other one.
Yeah.
There was a potential for this one to come back way over forty thousand, extra...
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion we use Ramjack gym foundation.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the bid on Ramjack for thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, to fix the foundation at the Sticker High School gym. Okay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan, yes. Action topic D, consideration to approve addendums for contracts for driver's education instructors effective January first, twenty twenty. Okay? Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan, yes. Action topic C, consideration to approve addendums for contracts for driver's education instructors effective January first, twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan, yes. Action topic D, consideration to approve addendums for contracts for driver's education instructors effective January first, twenty twenty.
Those guys are all at the back, those are the guys doing it, they just didn't have it on the contract, so for others to compensate for them, we just need to make an addendum on their contracts.
It's more, yeah, it's more than...
As a Hoover, Stamper.
On the Stamper.
And Gilmore, I think as long as you're just to prove that those additions is listed.
Make a motion we addend the contracts for driver's education instructors affected January first, twenty twenty.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve that addendums for the contracts for driver's education instructors effective January first, twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susan, yes. Time to move on to executive session. A, proposed executive session to discuss an act following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B, one of the Open Meeting Act and seven D Oklahoma Statute five dash one eighteen. Number one, discussion of retirement of Billy Bullard, Superintendent's Office, effective January thirty first, twenty twenty. Number two, discussion of retirement of Cindy Keith, kindergarten teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Number three, discussion of retirement of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, effective nineteen twenty-six, twenty twenty. Number four, discussion to accept resignation of John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant. And number five, discussion and possible board action on appointment of an individual and/or interview candidates for school, school board seat number four.
I make a motion we convene to the executive session.
I'll second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at seven fifty-two.
I'll make a motion we return to open session.
Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to return the board to open session at eight thirty-seven p.m. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. I make a motion we accept the retirement of Cindy Keith, kindergarten teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year.
I'll second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to accept the resignation of Cindy Keith, kindergarten teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, science teacher, effective May twenty-six, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the resignation of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, effective May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. Consideration of resignation of John Turntime, John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant.
Make a motion we accept the resignation, John Turntime, accepted vacancy at seat number four. I'll second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the resignation of John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant.
Yes.
Uh, Kenny, I'm sorry, Kenny. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, science teacher, effective May twenty-six, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the resignation of Angelette Rose, high school science teacher, effective May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. Consideration of resignation of John Turntime, John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant.
Make a motion we accept the resignation, John Turntime, accepted vacancy at seat number four. I'll second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the resignation of John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant.
Yes.
Uh, Kenny, I'm sorry, Kenny. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susan, yes.
I make a motion we appoint Brett Orm to seat number four.
I'll second.
Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to appoint Brett Orm to board seat number four. Um, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. Any business?
I'd like that question.
Oh, we need to seat you. No, no, no. We need to seat you.
Okay.
Okay, so would you come and join us, please?
Stand here?
Yes, please. Be hands up. Do you have different? I don't know what paper I'm... I have one, he has the sign. Oh, that, there's one.
Okay.
That's my other one.
Corner jigged, damn it.
I was in here.
She's got the...
She's got the...
Yes. So it's the same thing, I just...
To bump that one.
You need to read it.
You need to read that.
Oh, read that, sorry. Hi, Brett Orm, hereby declaring under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of member of Board of Education, Sticker School District, number I zero two zero, of High School County, Oklahoma, to the best of my ability, and I will faithfully discharge all the duties pertaining to set office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States and Oklahoma.
Welcome, Brett.
Thank you.
Any new business?
I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second. We want it. Jennifer? Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at eight forty-four p.m., to adjourn. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. I make a motion we adjourn. I'll second. We want it. Jennifer? Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at eight forty-four p.m., to adjourn. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susan, yes. I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to accept the resignation of John Turntime, board member, and declare seat number four vacant.
Yes.
Uh, Kenny, I'm sorry, Kenny. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susan, yes.
I make a motion we appoint Brett Orm to seat number four.
There you go.
I'll second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to appoint Brett Orm to board seat number four. Um, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.